Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd. And if you would please, everyone, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Jay Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Lasbell.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Files, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. And moving on. Didn't realize we were going to have a wrap now. One of the wonderful things about being mayor is you get to do proclamations and honoring a bunch of different kind of community members, community participants, and people in our world that make it what it is. And tonight, we have the honor of doing the Pride Month proclamation. Whereas, the city of Montrose supports diversity, inclusivity, equality, and human rights for all its citizens, and whereas, the LGBTQ+ lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and other marginalized gender and sexual identities community represents a vibrant and integral part of our city's fabric, contributing to its cultural richness and social vitality; and whereas, Montrose Pride Festival 2025 is an occasion for education, awareness, and advocacy, advancing the cause of LGBTQ+ rights and promoting the values of acceptance, respect, and equality; and whereas, the LGBTQ+ community continues to advocate for a society where all individuals can live authentically, free from discrimination and prejudice. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Montrose, Colorado, declare June 2025 as Pride Month in the city of Montrose, and encourage all Montrose residents to join us in recognition of the Pride Festival's role in fostering unity, understanding, and love among our residents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be official seal of the city of Montrose this third day of June 2025. We have a couple of representatives from the community here to accept us. If you would come on up.
Just want to say thank you to the city council and everybody here for attending and showing their support for the reading of this proclamation. It really does mean a lot, especially in rural communities like Montrose and like the western slope of Colorado, a place that I've called home for a big, big chunk of my life. So it just means a lot to have this read second year, and I hope to continue this in years long down the road.
And in continuing our fun things, we have also our You Make a Difference Award. And this time, we actually have the honor and privilege of recognizing two of our city's staff. And I want to point out that we didn't nominate them, that actually, they were nominated by other groups and individuals. So if Ryan and Danny could come on up. So this evening, I have the privilege of recognizing city employees Danny Kenamaka and Ryan Henderson with the You Make a Difference Award for their outstanding contributions to the Montrose Pavilion. Nominated by multiple community members and organizations, Dan and Ryan exemplify dedication, professionalism, and heart in every event they support. Whether it's running sound and lights, managing backstage logistics, or lending a hand with setup and teardown, they consistently go above and beyond, often working long hours behind the scenes to ensure every production runs smoothly. Together, they are not only a reliable team, but a vital part of what makes the pavilion a welcoming and successful venture. Their kindness, patience, attention to detail, unwavering support elevate every recital, concert, and community gathering. For many, they are not just staff, they are partners, problem solvers, and friends. Today, we honor Dan and Ryan for the difference they make, not just in the work they do, but in the lives they touch across our community. Danny and Ryan were nominated by three separate dance troupes. I'd say Danny and Ryan really do exemplify what is the best of Montrose, and the fact that we have staff that are willing to do that, willing to participate, willing to engage, far above what their job description requires, really is a great star in Montrose's sky. Thank you, guys. Moving on to our next item is the Call for Public Comment. The Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from using any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state law. We allocate three minutes per speaker, and if you would, everyone wishing to speak, please line up starting at the rail and work your way back toward the door. And when you come forward, please state your name and where you live for us, so we have that for our public record. Sir?
My name is Cliff Farr. I live on Waterfall Drive here in Montrose. Good evening.
I'm sorry, can we hold on one sec?
Yep.
Folks, we've got to be a little bit quiet, we can't hear what's going on. And if you would, raise the microphone just a little bit. Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The envisioned 2040 Comprehensive Plan is scheduled to be updated over the coming year with an anticipated completion date of August next year. Significant development is planned and underway in the southeast area of the city, but much remains unknown. To improve our understanding of what this area of the city is intended to become, please update the maps indicated in the companion spreadsheet, as there appear to be significant inconsistencies between planned and actual land use. For example, per the Future Land Use Map 5.1, on page 33 of the plan, a secondary center, as well as a neighborhood center, are identified to exist northeast of the bend of Otter Road near Falls at Valley Ranch. To quote from the plan, "The secondary center designation is intended to provide a mix of retail and service uses that are convenient to surrounding neighborhoods while reducing the need for cross-city traffic. These areas serve as focal points for pedestrian activity. Typical size for a secondary center is five to 15 acres and is to be located near intersections of two major roadways. The neighborhood center designation is intended for small, mixed-use commercial such as limited convenience shopping, office, and professional services in public facilities. Buildings are encouraged to be designed to blend with a surrounding neighborhood and located near the intersections of major and minor roadways. It appears that there is a disconnect between the planned use and the proposed use of the land identified as the Leonard Farms and Valley Ranch subdivisions. As the secondary center and neighborhood center have not been included in the Valley Ranch plan, then the residential mixed-density high designation in Leonard Farms subdivision no longer seems appropriate. Per the planned land use designations, residential mixed-density high use is especially appropriate in the downtown and areas immediately surrounding the city's core and areas adjacent to major and minor business centers. As there are no adjacent major and minor business centers being built in the Farms at Valley Ranch subdivision as a comprehensive plan designated, then the zoning for Leonard Farms must be modified accordingly. It is not consistent with the planned use and growth for this area of Montrose. Does the plan guide the use of Montrose land? Is that use embodied in zoning? If so, what happened here? Let's make sure the upcoming updates to the content of the plan reflect the needs of the community and adhere to the land use designations. Thank you."
Now, if you don't mind, folks, we don't encourage applause because it gets a little disruptive. Thank you.
My name is Theresa Farr. I live on Waterfall Drive. Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I realize it's early in the process, but I'm a planner. I would like to understand what an evacuation plan would look like had the proposed Leonard Farms and former Valley Ranch developments were in place. Currently, there are over 300 homes in the immediate area around the development, all of which empty onto Woodgate/Kinnickon Road. Otter Pond, Stone Ridge, Brook and Woodgate, Wildwood, and Friendly Hills all depend on Woodgate Road for primary access. Following a Marshall fire in Superior 2021, a survey was conducted of the evacuation. The data from the survey showed that 52% of homes evacuated using one car, 30 using two cars, and 7.74% evacuated using an RV or truck with a trailer. Using the same model, it would be safe to say that a full evacuation of this immediate area today could result in more than 400 vehicles evacuating at the same time down a single road. If the evacuation were to expand even a little, the challenge would include the Cottonwood Elementary School, Grace Community Church, and the Montrose Recreation Center all emptying onto Woodgate Road. These numbers do not include emergency vehicles that are entering the developments being evacuated. The Marshall fires is one example of why an evacuation might be necessary, and while it might be considered alarmist to think it could happen here, please note the following. For years, Asheville, North Carolina was considered a climate haven and never dreamed that they would experience the biblical event flooding that occurred with Hurricane and Hurricane. Seventy-two people died. Paradise, California was warned that a major wildfire event was imminent. The response from local authorities was, "It will never happen if the fires have never jumped the Feather River," until it did. While they had conducted periodic, small-scale evacuation practices, nothing prepared them for the large-scale real evacuations that failed miserably, resulting in the death of 85 people. In a report issued by FEMA in April of 2025, one of the contributing factors to the Marshall fires was limitation in existing wildfire safety and planning regulations. Specifically, neighborhoods with closely spaced houses less than 30 feet between structures were more likely to have structure-to-structure fires spread in disproportionate levels of damage. With the increase of population and initially proposed density of homes to be built within Leonard Farms subdivision, we are concerned about the lack of safety provided to the residents, current and future. There is only one way out from the proposed Phase 1 of Leonard Farms, west along the narrow Otter Road to Woodgate. How's that safe for anybody? Will these issues be addressed in this traffic study? I believe, and I know that you believe, safety is first and foremost, and I thank you for taking this into consideration when you make your decisions. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next.
My name is John Brown from Montrose. Thank you, Mayor, for your time last week explaining to me that you have stated that Montrose is a non-sanctuary city. I still have a problem with your statement. A verbal statement can be rescinded at any time by anybody. As we all know, that if it is not in writing in a contract format, then it never happened. This is a contract with the people. As Dr. Gail Fresetta said at the last city council meeting, until Montrose declares that it is a non-sanctuary city in writing, it is not binding. I am asking the council to declare or proclaim or produce something in writing stating exactly what you stated at the end of the last city council meeting, that Montrose is a non-sanctuary city. You have said that a written statement is not binding. Well, I feel that a verbal statement, as made by you, is also non-binding. If the council were to declare or proclaim Montrose to be a non-sanctuary city in writing, signed by the mayor and the city council members, it would become obvious that all of Montrose is non-sanctuary. This would also be notification to the local NGOs that receive city funds are not to use those funds for illegals. Please note, I am still referring to those that have entered our country and are living in our midst as illegals. A person who has entered our country by legal means and plans on making America their country, making Colorado their home, and making Montrose our Montrose County and city their permanent home are immigrants, legal immigrants, if you prefer, and are welcomed. The legal immigrant has done everything required to become an American citizen. A true immigrant wants to become part of the community, not a sponge looking for a hot handout. A true immigrant will become a part of our community and not just a way of sending all their funds out of state. So you see, a declaration would help the legal immigrant and not the freeloaders. By making this proclamation, it would put the NGOs who are currently aiding the illegals on notice that we, the people, don't want to use our funds, sales tax funds included, for illegal activities. I am asking the entire city council to produce such a document for proof that Montrose is indeed a non-sanctuary city. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Badiaco. I wanted to talk tonight about how Montrose gets its water from Project 7. Right now, Project 7 treats 26 million gallons of water every day to drinking water standards. But a lot of the water ends up watering lawns or being used for other irrigation purposes around town. Honestly, that's not the best use of our resources. It's expensive, it's tough on the environment, and with single-family homes growing by 5% from 20 to 24, we're only putting more pressure on our water supply. Meanwhile, we've got plenty of untreated water from the Uncompagri Valley Water Users Association. What if we use that non-potable water for irrigation instead? It would cut down on energy use, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and take some stress off of our water system. Plus, it could push back the need for a $200 million treatment plant, which might even climb closer to a half a billion dollars, allowing us the time to plan for the new plant. I know it isn't just the city, but the city is the biggest user of Project 7's treated water. Montrose has a strong voice in this. This could be part of a bigger, long-term plan to keep costs down for everyone. Thanks to Colorado's prior appropriation doctrine, the Uncompagri Valley Water Users Association has enough non-potable water rights to cover irrigation needs. Treating water just to sprinkle lawns, treating the water just to sprinkle lawns is crazy. That's wasting energy and could hurt the Uncompagri River in the long run. Now, setting up parallel, non-potable water lines would run about $2,000 to $6,000 per home, but we should just offer 50% taxpayer rebate that drops that down to $1,000 to $3,000, depending on the home. We could also give developers tax credits and free waivers to install dual systems in new neighborhoods, and that'd make things more sustainable, lower utility bills in the long run, and cut treatment costs. And we don't have to do this all at once. It could be a five- to 10-year plan, spreading the costs out.
Thirty seconds.
Without needed additional financing. Using the association's water for irrigation fits right in with Montrose's 2016 water conservation plan and the turf replacement program. It would protect the ecosystem and make sure that we're saving treated water for drinking. I'm asking the council to back this idea and pitch it as a smarter alternative to Project 7's new treatment plant. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kelly Codell. I am here in opposition of the Leonard Farms subdivision. I have been in the roadway construction industry for 19 years. I have published six articles, two of which have been specifically about public safety and roadway design. I am the Colorado agent for the largest traffic structure manufacturer in the U.S. I like my job, except for inevitably when I get the phone call that a kid was hit by a car in front of school. This happens more often than you think. The mayor and council are in panic. They want a traffic structure tomorrow. Traffic structure lead times are four to six months out. All of these are custom-made to order, and we do not have them lying around. These situations are always dangerous, sometimes fatal. So we're stuck with a dangerous situation, the community and the parents are demanding to know why, and they don't want this to go unresolved for another four to six months while their kids are at school daily. These cars that line up partially in the lane at drop-off and pickup, they don't have stop signs or flashing lights like a school bus does. It only takes one person to zip by at the same time as a kid. How tall are elementary school kids? Do you feel confident that you could see one behind a car? And who's at fault? The kid? The driver trying to utilize a public road? A parent given no place to park? Poor planning is at fault. Traffic studies are all about risk, they are not an exact science. At what point is it likely statistically that something bad will happen? I think we all know, the longer we are exposed to a dangerous situation, the more likely a negative outcome will occur. To allow building until our infrastructure max threshold is reached and only then to pause and hold for that dangerous situation to remain for another 10 to 15 years until infrastructure money has caught up is irresponsible. Whose kid is worthless enough to be the collateral damage? We all know that this problem is coming. The developer can be given two options. They can expand the road themselves, including wider lanes, shoulder parking with a safety gap, and possibly traffic control. I do regularly receive orders from developers.
Thirty seconds.
This is not unheard of. Or they can wait until the infrastructure is in place as provided by the city build-out plan. From my conversations, the funding from city resources for the Otter/Woodgate 550 area is 10 to 15 years out, which is actually well within this parcel's projected build anyway. Otter Road and Woodgate are simply not ready for this high-density housing at this time, especially with such close proximity to an elementary school. Thank you.
Ready to go? Okay. I'm Joe Selet on Brookway, and I want to speak in opposition of the Leonard Farms subdivision. I've been here previous, the previous meeting, as well as the planning meeting, and I guess I'm just going to reiterate the same kinds of things I said, but maybe with a little more focus on safety in the general area, as well as not just the general area, but anything, as I stated before, in a quadrant of town. And I think that safety is first and foremost. Other people have spoken about the same thing, I have, as I just mentioned. And just the other day, this is just something additional, but that substation that's immediately south of the subdivision, whatever, it's on Otter Road, at the top of the hill near Woodgate. I have no idea, and I don't know if anybody here does as well, how that substation is going to survive in that location and improve the road on Otter all the way down to 550. It almost seems an impossibility at great cost. I presume DMEA or Tri-State or somebody is going to be responsible for moving that. But without it being moved, it's impossible to widen that road all the way down. It's windy, it's narrow anyway. That's just one safety issue. It's almost currently a safety issue, let alone additional traffic, without improvement. But as stated before, with the school on Woodgate and people entering and exiting onto Woodgate, traveling down to City Market and Walmart, the road right now is bad news, and I think everybody here is quite aware of that, but it is a significant safety issue. The issue is just going to grow exponentially as a result of the Leonard Farms subdivision. And right now, Otter Road, as it's heading down toward that proposed subdivision, you're barely able to get two large vehicles passing each other going in opposition, in opposing directions. So this is kind of a big deal. I would suppose, I think, an alternate solution to mitigate some of this is to, at the very least, start the subdivision in whatever form it takes, off of Ogden, not off of Otter. Anyway, that's it. Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Greetings, city council members. My name is Charles Head. I've lived in Montrose for 13 years, and my wife and I have lived in the Brook subdivision for seven years. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard tonight. I am here to express my concerns regarding the proposed Leonard Farms development. Transformation of this area from a semi-rural to urban environment will require significant changes to the existing infrastructure, and those could present many safety and health concerns to both current and future residents. My sense is that the assessment of the safety, environmental, and economic risk of a complicated project like this will require an enormous amount of work from qualified professionals. I hope that the ensuing process is a comprehensive evaluation with realistic results that are supported by hard, verifiable data from professional sources. I also hope that all data, beginning with the preliminary plat, are made readily available to the public, and that there will be additional opportunities for public comment. With regards to economics, I would like to see a line-item range of estimated costs and who will pay for them. With regards to the developer, I would like to see the city take measures to ensure the developer and his contractors are held accountable for all of their responsibilities, including a bond posting to provide incentive to do so. Lastly, I hope that all plans, models, and results are made public and subject to review by qualified professionals not related to the project. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Pete Peterson. I moved here recently to Montrose, and my wife and I are enjoying it very much. We live on Brookway in the Brook subdivision. When I initially heard about the planned development at the farms over here, I was most alarmed, I guess, by the high density that seems to be inherent in how many units they seem to be wanting to put in there in the small area. But then I was even more concerned about the fact that if you've ever been over there near the elementary school at about 3:00 in the afternoon, when there are not dozens, not scores, but hundreds of cars over there picking up kids, I think, just to be completely honest, you need to go over there, if you haven't already done that, and see what it's like. Traveling north on Woodgate, you literally have to move into the lane intended for oncoming traffic to be able to go north on Woodgate. And there's also not a 90-degree turn, but a very severe turn there that is just asking for traffic troubles. So I certainly want you to consider these things, and if possible, get out into the field and witness during school hours, when school's in session, what it's like for traffic to try to negotiate that area. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Lea Van Der Slus. I'm here to talk to about public safety, and I know public safety is, obviously, from what we've even heard tonight, is a top concern for our citizens and for Colorado in general. I got some information from crimegrade.org and as well as city-data.com. And did you know that Colorado has been number one in car theft for years? Did you know that in 2023, crime rates were very high in Montrose? It was rated at 166, Olatha was 4. And we are higher than 89% of U.S. cities. Crime rates rose just 6% from 2002 to 2003. We are rated as a, on a scale of A to F, we are rated as a D minus in Montrose, according to these crime websites, which indicates that the rate of crime is much higher than that of the average U.S. city. And this is applying only to our official city boundaries. There is a table, too, that you can find on crimegrade.org as well. But the thing that I'm concerned about is that many of the bills that have been passed by our legislatures up in the Denver, Montrose area have really tied the hands of our law enforcement. And the city of Aurora has taken a lead in developing, creating policies that will actually untie their hands and enable our law enforcement to arrest and keep people where they need to be, instead of like releasing them on personal recognizant bonds, which most people don't even show up for, as they promised to show up for court for a certain date, and most of them don't show up. And I learned that from Sheriff Lillard. So I just want to encourage you to consider this, because I think that all of us in Montrose are concerned about safety, and we really want to be able to feel safe in the city. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Donna Swallow, and I live on Waterfall Drive. I want to share with you again this month the concerns regarding the Leonard Farms subdivision. At the Planning Commission meeting in April, many residents spoke, sharing concerns regarding issues of safety, traffic, access in and out through Otter Road, the density of the proposed subdivision. At the end of the meeting, Mr. Miles introduced himself and stated that he intends to develop, as platted in the 2008 plan, regardless of legitimate concerns of current homeowners. And he plans to start this building in December of this year, which is only six months out. I'm respectfully asking you, our city council, as well as the Planning Commission, to reconsider the current way that this land is platted, and that our concerns be addressed prior to the subdivision moving forward. Are we, as concerned citizens, powerless in this issue? Do our voices count, or does only the voice of the developer count? Thanks very much.
My name is Justin Grant Oatman White. I represent the homeless of the community. Everybody's concerned about safety, from what I hear. My friends are in danger. They're 10.5 miles and 7.6 miles out of town, with hardships of water and food, and nobody seems to care about that. It's the middle of summer. I cared about that. There has to be some sort of resolution to this problem. I have solutions for the homeless community. If you guys would like to hear them, I'd like to set up a private meeting with you guys, so we could get down to the brass tacks. Is that be permissible to you guys? I do have legitimate answers. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further public comments, we'll move on to agenda item number eight. And for those of you who'd like to stay, I would really love to have you here, but if you want to leave, that's perfectly fine. We'll give you just a second.
Mr. Mayor, would you kindly explain ex parte communications, or the attorney? So that some of these people that are here to voice their opinions on land development and other issues pertaining to the plats and annexations, that until the hearing date, we really can't reply or get involved in that sort of stuff? If you would, please.
Sure. That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So ex parte communication really comes when there is a quasi-judicial, well, judicial or quasi-judicial, hearing here with council. It would be a quasi-judicial hearing. Ex parte communication is communication outside of the public, where information is given to the, I will say judiciary, but here it is our city council. So I will actually be bringing this up later, but, plan on bringing it up later, but I'll bring it up now. There was, in fact, ex parte communication sent to the council this week. I will disclose that further, once we get to that agenda item, and it will be put into the record, so that everything that has been received really is shown to the public. That is the biggest thing. It needs to be in front of the public, so every party, not just the council people, but the applicant as well, should be aware of this information that has been given. So that is a very short version of ex parte communication in the context of the council. If you'd like me to expand further, I'd be happy to.
But with one caveat, and that applies to pending applications.
Right. So if, in fact, there is a pending application, if, in fact, there is a pending application, then yes, outside of the context of this, any here, or open meeting, it would be ex parte communication.
We'll get into that a little bit later. Again. Very good. We're moving on to agenda item number eight, city council consideration of the minutes of the May 20, 2025 regular city council meeting. And we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the May 20, 2025 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda item number nine, and this is one of my favorite times of year and one of my favorite applications to consider. So city council consideration of an application for the fireworks display permit for the annual Fourth of July fireworks display. And presenting this is our Pavilion and Community Events Manager, Catherine Scherer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Frank, and council members. I'm here this evening to formally request city council approval for the Fourth of July fireworks display, to be presented by Zambelli Fireworks. This show is scheduled for Friday, July 4, with the launch site set to take place from Sunset Mesa at approximately 9:40 p.m. For your reference, the packet before you includes a fully executed and approved application from the fire, from the Montrose Fire Protection District, as well as the fireworks permit application submitted by the Community Events Department to the city clerk's office. In addition, I would like to take a moment to share with you, council, and our community for the exciting lineup of events planned for this year's Independence Day celebration. At 10 a.m., the day begins on Main Street with our patriotic parade themed Heroes Among Us. At 1 p.m., festivities continue at the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater on Shane's Way, featuring family-friendly activities, local vendors, and a food village. At 3 p.m., the Black Canyon Rotary Club, in partnership with the Horsefly Brewery, will host the Beer Garden for those seeking a refreshing alcoholic beverage. At 6 p.m., the second annual concert in the Montrose Summer Music Series kicks off in partnership with the city. The evening will feature DNG Railroad as the opening act, followed by a headlining performance from the California Honey Drops. At 9:40 p.m., the evening celebration concludes with the grand fireworks display by Zambelli Fireworks over Sunset Mesa. And finally, on Saturday, July 5, at 9 a.m., the Welcome Home Alliance for Veterans will host a community pancake breakfast at the Warrior Resource Center located at Fort Hillcrest Plaza Way. This event is open to the public and offers a meaningful opportunity for our community to connect and show appreciation for the local men and women who have served our community. Thank you, council, for your time and your support, and if I can answer any questions if needed. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, would accept public comment. Is there any public comment on our Fourth of July fireworks program? And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks display permit for the annual Fourth of July fireworks display as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. We are all looking forward very much to the fun fireworks and all the parade and all the great activities.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, and we have a recusal on this item.
On both 10 and 11.
Councilmember Reed is going to recuse himself because of a potential conflict of interest. And we'll give him a moment to clear the room. Thank you. And for this item, I would really like to stress to the public, we are not voting on or discussing the merits of the application at this point. On this item, all we're doing is setting the hearing dates. And I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Christausi. Do you want to mention on this one?
No. It's 12.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. And in the case, I'll turn it over to senior planner, William Reese.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. We did discuss this during the city council work session on May 19. Tonight's city council is considering a resolution that would set a hearing date for the annexation application, which per state law must occur between 30 and 60 days of the resolution. The resolution proposes July 15 for that official hearing date, which does comply with state law. As you said before, the actual details of the annexation itself are not applicable in tonight's vote. That being said, just to give a brief background on the annexation, this is an 8.98 acre site north of the Waterfall Canyon subdivision, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary, West Montrose Sanitation District and City Water Service District. More than 1/6 of the perimeter does border existing city limits. The applicant has requested R3 zoning for this annexation, which matches the adjacent property already within city limits. R3 zoning is a residential district that allows for single-family detached and duplex dwellings, but I should note that the existing site serves as stormwater collection for the existing subdivision, so there isn't actually any residential development plan for this site. This here is the annexation plat itself, which is an exact meets-and-bounds description of the area to be annexed, and shows that the property does border existing city limits. This area is shown as residential mixed density low, which indicates that the area is primarily appropriate for single-family homes or small amounts of attached development, though, again, this does serve as a drainage site. This is also within Growth Area 3, which would indicate an area that's further away from services and infrastructure that would pose a greater burden to service, but I will note that there aren't any roads or anything like that intended for this property. We do have an annexation agreement. The property is eligible for annexation, and an impact report will not be required. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2025-05, which I'll reiterate merely sets the date for the annexation hearing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we would accept public comment. And again, this is just to set the hearing date. If you would, sir, please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Rick Stainer. I live in the Waterfall Canyon subdivision at 1004 Avenue, and I'm here to ask the city council to delay the request for a hearing. The reason for this is our HOA has engaged legal services to review the governing documents to ensure our rights as homeowners are satisfied. We see the pond annexation as a problem for our community, because historically, the developer has given any property within the boundaries that cannot, of our subdivision, that cannot be used to build homes to our HOA, basically through a quick claim process. This means it is incumbent upon the homeowners and the HOA to improve landscape and ensure this property. They're otherwise unusable. The report also says they can't build on this piece of property and is supposedly a stormwater collection point. I'm not saying that the owner of this property will click claim it, quick claim it to us, but I'm just saying historically, that's what's been done. I have been told anecdotally that the HOA cannot refuse this land due to the way our governing documents are written. The HOA would like the additional time, if granted by council, to have our lawyer review our CCRs and bylaws to ensure our rights are protected. The individual we engage stated that they would need a couple of weeks to review everything within our governing documents and determine what our legal rights are, if any. The parcel of land we are discussing sits to the northwest of the existing neighborhood with no roads and no access to it, and doesn't impact the community at this point. I don't believe that by postponing the hearing date, it will produce any kind of hardship on the owner. Please allow us, this time, to determine our legal rights regarding what, if any, effect it may have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-5 as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes three to one with one abstention. Moving on to item number 11, city council consideration of Resolution 2025-06, setting July 15, 2025, as the hearing date for the annexation of the Waterfall Canyon West addition. Again, senior planner, William Reese.
Sorry, I just need to play with the mic a little bit there. If I could get the screen back to Creston, please. That's the next item. Okay. So this is associated with the other annexation, but because it is a separate tract of land, it does need to be considered separately. But the same thing, this is just a resolution to set a hearing date, and we are proposing that same date of July 15. This piece is a 1.21 acre site west of Waterfall Canyon, and this is the result of a boundary line adjustment that was done, which made a small portion of the Waterfall Canyon outlot, which is mostly in city limits. There is a small piece that technically isn't right now, and this would just fix that. There's no issues with jurisdiction between the city and the county. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, city sewer service area, and Chappeta Water Service Area. Again, just to match the existing zoning of the area that it touches, the proposal is for R3 medium-density district zoning, though I will note that this piece of land is pretty much just a bend of the creek that runs through here, so it's not really feasible to develop. Here is the annexation plat itself, again, showing the exact legal description for the property and showing that it does meet contiguity requirements. This plate, piece is also shown as residential mixed density low, and this is also within Growth Area 3, but given the topography of the site, there's realistically wouldn't be any infrastructure that will be put in place on this site. any infrastructure that will be put in place on this site. Again, the property does meet the eligibility requirements for annexation. An agreement is required, but an annexation impact report will not be required. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2025-06, setting the hearing date for July 15th. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
No.
Seeing none, would accept public comment. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt 2025-06 as presented.
I'll take that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please vote. And that passes three to one with one abstention. Thank you. And if someone could retrieve Mr. Reed. All right, moving on to item number 12, Sugar Pine Subdivision Preliminary Plat. City council consideration of the Sugar Pine Subdivision Preliminary Plat. Again, senior planner, William Reese.
Thank you again. I will just need a second to present here.
Actually, Will, before you go, if I may, so as we were discussing ex parte communication, this is in fact the agenda item that did receive ex parte communication. The applicant has been given a copy of the email. As you all know, it is improper for you all to judge anything, well, this agenda item on such email, as it was not presented before the public, before this public meeting. So it will be a part of the packet, as I stated earlier. Please do not use that as part of your decision if in fact you did read the email. Again, it is ex parte communication and should not be considered when making your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reese.
Thank you and good evening again. This is a subdivision proposal that's located on Lot 1 of the Sugar Pine Minor subdivision, which is located south of Evan Street and west of 6700 Road. Overall, this is a 16.2 acre site in size. The property is zoned R3 medium density district, and this is a subdivision proposal for 36 residential lots, along with associated open space, rights of way, easements, et cetera. The R3 zoning does allow for duplexes as well, and each lot, as proposed, is large enough to accommodate a duplex, but could also be a single-family home. This chart shows the standard subdivision process, which begins with a sketch plan that's brought before the planning commission, which in this case occurred on June 26, 2024. This step in the process is the preliminary plat, which consists of more formal plans, including civil engineering, traffic studies, more exact property lines, a phasing plan, et cetera. This goes to both planning commission and city council. This was presented to planning commission on May 28, 2025, and they did unanimously vote to recommend approval of this preliminary plat. Subdivisions are reviewed for general conformance with the master plan and zoning regulations, the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, potential hazard areas, and other physical characteristics, the availability of water, means of sewage collection and treatment, stormwater drainage, access, and other utilities and services, compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife, vegetation, and unique natural features, adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian access, availability of fire, police, and other emergency services protection, and impacts on area schools. According to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, this area is shown as residential mixed density medium, which suggests that the area is appropriate for single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, or single-family attached development. The property is zoned R3 medium density district, which is intended to provide for an area which is suitable primarily for single household detached, attached, and duplex dwellings, along with certain other compatible land uses. The properties adjacent to properties zoned R2 low-density district, R3 medium-density district, P public district, B2A regional commercial district, and properties outside of city limits. This here is the first page of the plat itself, which as usual, pretty much just consists of plat notes and signature lines. The second page shows the actual proposed subdivision itself. As mentioned, each lot is large enough to accommodate a duplex, though it could also be a single-family home. Also, this plat shows the easements and right-of-way dedication, as well as open space. And the third page shows the proposed phasing plan. As proposed, this would split the overall development into three separate phases, starting with 16 lots, 13 lots in the second phase, and seven lots in the third phase. Staff finds that the proposal is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent and standards of the R3 medium-density district zoning designation. This was presented to the planning commission for a recommendation, and they did recommend approval of the plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats. The planning commission's recommendation was unanimous. Staff recommends approval of the Sugar Pine Subdivision Preliminary Plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all plats. And with that, that concludes my presentation. We do have the applicant, the applicant's traffic engineer, excuse me, we have the applicant's traffic engineer available via Google meets, and we have their civil engineer here as well.
Are there any questions for Mr. Reese, or the applicant, or the engineer?
Yeah, I have a question concerning that bridge that's right there that...
On 6700?
Pardon?
On 6700?
Yeah. That is a very narrow bridge, and I was just curious as to whose responsibility it's going to be to fix that? Is that going to be the responsibility of the city or that of the developer based on the fact that I heard some information pertaining to cars and traffic? And how's it going to impact that stop sign or the stoplight there on the road? And who's responsibility is going to be that? So that's one of my questions. I'm just a little concerned about safety as living on or close to 6700 Road. That's a, it turned into an extremely busy road, and the fact that it's a very fast road.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So both of those are planned city capital projects. So the widening of 6700, that bridge will be a full replacement and widened to accommodate all the irrigation there and bring that to a full standard minor arterial template. You know, 6700 eventually would be widened to the full minor arterial standard, just like the missing piece we did, but the bridge is kind of the first piece of that. That would happen before the widening of the road itself. The signal at 6700 and the highway there, we also view as a city capital project. That's as part of the ongoing signal designs right now. The first one that's going to hit as the farthest into the warrants is 6530 in San Juan, but as part of that, we looked at 6700 in the highway and 6450 in San Juan through the warrant studies to understand when those hit, and it looks like actually 6700 will be pretty close, so probably within the next five years, if I had to guess, ultimately up to council. There would be a city capital project, funds pending, council approval, all those things for the signal there at 6700, but that timeline is tentative. But we view all those as city capital projects because there's, you know, this subdivision is relatively small in comparison to those larger minor arterial capital projects. So, you know, major projects required on minor arterials. This subdivision by no means puts any of those over the top. Those are projects that are in the hopper either way, and you know, the four to 7,000 vehicles a day that use 6700 Road, this subdivision represents a relatively small fraction of that, so we don't feel it'd be proportional or fair to put those improvements onto that subdivision. And they are, they're functional as is, but, and this traffic won't change that, but there is room for improvement with, again, the widening and the signal eventually, and that's why they're folded into the city's capital priorities.
And that is something that will be included in our upcoming budget processes.
Certainly, yep. So within the capital plan, there's a figure that shows those projects their cost, and each year we run through, and I, you know, internally, we're working, looking out five to seven years of all the projects coming down the pipe, and then council is considering those on an annual basis with input from the public and all of that through the budget process.
And I would specify that the traffic loads, we can't predict the future. We don't have the crystal ball. We do our best estimate, and Mr. Murphy does an excellent job trying to project that, but with the actual traffic volume is what determines our warrants. So the actual traffic volume, when we evaluate that and do the actual testing, that's what determines kind of the prioritization of those projects. Any other questions for Mr. Murphy or Mr. Reese?
Yes, please. Mr. Reese, this has been stated as being 36 lots that are capable of being duplex, which would lead me to be 72 homes. But when I look at the plating, I see some of the things that, some of the lot sizes are not big enough for duplex. So do you know what the number is? How many duplexes there might be?
So each one of the lots is large enough to accommodate a duplex. I forget the exact square footage here. Maybe Chase or Scott can pull up that section of the zoning code. But as proposed, yes, under the R3 zoning designation, each lot is large enough to accommodate a duplex.
I guess I'm confused. Back in the packet, I read, I thought I read that to be qualified for a duplex, it'd be 9,335 square feet?
That might be correct. I think each one of these is close to 10,000. I believe the smallest one is 9,375 square feet.
And the smallest lot size is 9,375 square feet for a duplex?
Oh, I'm sorry, I could hear you, Chase, but I couldn't find you.
Over here, yeah. Yeah, I guess I don't have a nameplate either. For the record, community development director. Yeah, so as the code currently reads, 9,375 square feet is that minimum lot size for a duplex, and I believe all lots, as Mr. Reese explained, accommodate that size.
Okay, thank you.
One question I would add on to that is the question of, with the duplexes, the access points for each lot, would that alter or change the access points and then the amount of access points needed for each lot? For off-street parking?
For off-street parking? So each unit would still have to have required off-street parking. We don't have the building designs yet, so we can't, you know, are the, are the access points or are the driveways going to be connected, or are they going to be separated out? We'll know that once the building plans come in, but either way would work, and as long as the off-street parking is accommodated appropriately.
And the other final question I have is access to Lot 24. Just to be clear, that's off of Maiden Hair Drive along the side toward the Arroyo? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I'm, what I was reading on there?
Yeah, so it creates kind of a little bit of an L-shaped lot, but it does have street frontage, so the access would come off of that road.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
As I, as I recall, when this first came up, it was set up where they were looking for some triplexes or fourplexes, and we did reduce that down, as I recall.
There hasn't been a previous preliminary plat application on this property, certainly not since I've been here, perhaps in the past, but there were some applications previously for some rezonings, which was, actually occurred to the property itself, not on this property. So this was not applicable for that application.
Point of clarification, this is zoned R3. What is, and so the developer, if this is approved, would be entitled, as a matter of right, to develop whatever is permitted in R3, whether that be duplexes, single-family, or whatever. We can't control that because of its zoning, once it is zoned and approved, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a little bit of concern for health and safety based on the fact that there's only one exit out of the both parts of the subdivision, the one up above it. And in previous years, previous councils, it's been kind of for safety based on the fact that fire, if something happens at the intersection, how people are going to get out of that? To have an alternate exit in, out of the subdivision for practical safety reasons for the fire department, emergency...
I would assume, correct me if I'm wrong, as in every other application like this, the Montrose Fire Protection District, both fire and EMS services, has reviewed the plan, correct? And approved?
That's correct. We send every subdivision application, no matter how big or small, to the Fire Protection District, as well as E911 coordinators to... They do need to sign off and approve the plan as presented, or it to move forward to the planning commission and city council.
And I take it you received no negative comments from the fire district?
With this iteration, correct? Yes.
And they've signed off on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? So would entertain public comment. And if you would, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Scott Hawkins, 2739 Caboose Drive. So thank you for your time today, council members. Kind of going to shift gears because I did ask for a continuation on this ruling tonight because of, this was, went through planning on last Wednesday, and there was some information at that planning commission meeting that us as subdivision owners that live in Iron Horse subdivision were not purveyed to, so we, I did a request to the planning commission. I have not seen that information from them yet. Potentially, I actually ideally was the traffic study, because we sat in here in awe of that traffic study that we knew nothing about as residents of the Iron Horse subdivision. So I did request that because there were some, which we as people that live in that subdivision, don't feel that that traffic study was accurate to the actual amount of traffic that's in that subdivision. But we're going to move forward with that, so I'm going to talk to you here, you know, Mr. Yilber, you said something about safety, and I propose that to the planning commission about safety. And in the planning commission's regulations, it mentions safety and the welfare of even existing residents a half a dozen or more times in the, in the planning regulations. And then you hear the other people here today talking about like the Leonard Farms safety. So that's where I'm going to, I'm going to kind of focus that on is, in the planning commission, it was brought up that this is the only subdivision in the city of Montrose that's ever taken place where a subdivision was built, and the only way into that subdivision is through another subdivision. So there's no access points to this subdivision outside of the Iron Horse subdivision. So you're doubling our traffic loads, you're doubling everything. There was a great picture that the gentleman that did the traffic study of Caboose Drive with absolutely zero cars on it. This is the picture I took right after the planning commission on my way home. You can see Caboose Drive is lined with cars. There was also discussion on 6675 Road, because 6675 Road's only like three-quarters of what it should be, and that's the street to the west of Iron Horse subdivision. And it was brought up that there's nothing that the city can do because the city doesn't own that property, and they can't build out 6675 Road to the correct width of per-city requirements, but that is inaccurate because on, if you look up on the plot map, or you know, the section, the city owns that. You guys own that property to the west of Iron Horse subdivision and absolutely 100% could build out 6675 Road to, you know, a reasonable width, because right now, you can't pass two cars on there. And I think that's something that the builder ought to be looking at, is finishing the street out, so at least can take some of the pressure off of Caboose Drive and Iron Horse Drive, at least funnel some of that down, because the city does own that property. So that's something that we as owners in Iron Horse subdivision would like you guys to look at, is consider the safety. You're doubling the traffic on our streets, and that's not including construction traffic, cement trucks, concrete, all that stuff going up and down our streets. You're dumping all of this subdivision right into, right into us and making us deal with it. When, your titles right there say that safety and welfare, safety and welfare, and I know the planning commission voted unanimously, but I'm asking you guys to maybe take a little bit harder look... bit harder look at this, of how it impacts our subdivision, and then the children playing, riding on the streets. His traffic study said thirty-five additional cars an hour, which I disagree with. You're, you're putting, was it seventy-six duplex or seventy-six single-family residences in there, average two cars a piece, that's what, you know, a hundred and forty-some cars in there, people go, go three, four times a day? We just, it's gotten a lot to us. So I just ask that you guys really can consider the safety aspect of, of this and look at building out sixty-seven, sixty-six seventy-five road. We know that, we know the subdivision's going to go in, we're just asking for your help and the builders' help to have neighbors be neighborly, like I mentioned, and how can we make sixty-six seventy-five road better? How can we try to take some of the pressure off of Caboose Drive and Iron Horse Drive are straight roads? And I call Caboose Drive a quarter-mile drag strip. I live on that street, and cars go by there fifty miles an hour, because it's straight and it's downhill when they come in off our subdivision. I mean, they just fly down that road. And now we're doubling that traffic doing fifty miles. I know it's this little tiny speed limit sign that says twenty miles per hour, you know, Chief Hall was here, he, how, how fast do people go down sixty-seven hundred road? Right? They don't care. And so the safety of doubling that high-speed traffic is...
We don't have the timer.
Is an issue. I'll go, yeah, that's, but anyways, thank you guys for your time, and I really hope that you take this into consideration, the safety of the, the actual residents that live in Iron Horse subdivision.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comments? And we do try to give three minutes, it's just, we didn't have the...
How much did I give?
I'm sorry that the timer's not showing, but Lisa Delpiccolo, our city clerk, can see it, so she'll alert us if the timer...
Thank you. So our city clerk will give you the notification in thirty seconds.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council, I appreciate your being here to hear our voice. I am also representing the Iron Horse. My name is Martin Cressman. I live on one-fifty Roundhouse Street. What we're trying to do is not to stop the subdivision from being built. Our concern right now is traffic. The canned traffic study by duly-elected professionals is fine. The problem is, we don't have access for this new subdivision. The sixty-six seventy-five road was pointed out to us as not being worthy of blowing out. I believe the comments were, why should the city spend money to expand the road, to push the traffic just in another direction? Another direction meaning that sixty-six seventy-five road bypassed through Iron Horse, what it was designed for. So the Sugar Pine will be developed, there's no question. We need help with traffic. Access, the city planners said it's no big deal. That subdivision is designed for eight hundred cars per day, which was ridiculous. So, in conclusion, what we really need help with is to, you guys, control the city. You can control the build-out of that sixty-six seventy-five road if you want to. It'll help a great deal. The traffic will go from that subdivision straight up to Iron Horse and out. We considered speed bumps, they're irrelevant. So we need your help for an access road, that sixty-six seventy-five, I don't want to die on it, but it appears to be the easiest solution. Last year, we directed a letter to the City Council asking that we have two roads with slow children-playing signs installed, and we had not heard anything from the city. We brought it up during the Planning Commission, and that was, it's irrelevant to what was being discussed. So for the safety of the Iron Horse subdivision, we would still like to get some slow children-playing signs. And then, of course, here comes the doubling of the traffic. So we could use your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Chantel Hawkins, twenty-seven thirty-nine Caboose Drive. Just to piggyback us more on some of the safety issues, as we're looking at the subdivision here, there isn't any place for like kids or anything to play. So what that's going to do is, since Iron Horse is the only one that has the park that's closest, because they're not going to go over to Columbine, so just to think about that as well, so having all the kiddos cross, and you know how kids are, I mean, they just want to play. And so they're going to go over to the R Park in the Iron Horse subdivision. And so just making, just reiterating on the fact that with all the people speeding, I mean, I work from home and I see it all the time, they're just like, seriously, just whole butt, all the time. So just thinking into consideration on that, so maybe that can be worked into maybe something like with the plans here, where there's also a park that they could maybe do as well to just kind of, I don't know if that can be, anything that's reasonable, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? What is our requirement for open space for subdivisions of this size?
So at the end of the day, it's ultimately dependent upon the annexation agreement. In this case, the annexation agreement states a minimum of eight percent open space. Because I'm not sure the exact percentage here, but it is above that, that minimum of eight percent.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, we only allow one, one shot per person. Sorry. Any other questions for staff?
Does Evans Street go through?
So currently, Evans Street, as shown, would dead-end it where it already is dead-ended. Long-term, in the, in the future plans, Evans Street would connect with, there's another portion of Evans Street down the Cedar Creek subdivision, and that's obviously wouldn't be immediate, but as proposed currently, no, Evans Street would, would be a dead end here.
Okay.
David Wentz, one-three-four Roundhouse Street. My understanding is they're wanting to use Cedar Creek as their open space. I don't know if that's true, but if it is, that's what my understanding is.
Thank you. If there are no more questions or discussion, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Sugar Pine subdivision preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addressed all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes four to one. Thank you. Moving on to item number thirteen, City Council, consideration of the purchase of sixty-five Axon Taser tens and the Taser certification bundle for the total purchase price of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents. Police Chief Blaine Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I come before you tonight recommending the purchase approval of sixty-five Axon Taser tens and the Taser certification bundle, which essentially means access to Axon Taser's training program and materials to train our police officers on the latest version of Axon Taser. This latest version, as we discussed in work session, comes with some fairly significant upgrades to the Taser system, essentially increasing the number of cartridges that the Taser can deploy without first reloading, and then also the distance now that the cartridge can, can be deployed from twenty-one feet up to forty-five feet. We have already received these Tasers, and we have started our training on them, but now we are asking for essentially purchase approval to start year one of five for the new lease option for these Tasers. The total price or the total amount of purchase that we're asking for is fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents. This was already budgeted in our lease line item for 2025 and approved last year as a budget item for this year. So with that, I entertain any questions?
Any questions for Chief Hall?
I take it nothing has changed since yesterday, right?
Nothing has changed, no.
Yeah, one of the things, things that you had mentioned yesterday was that the Tasers give us the opportunity to avoid lethal confrontations on a far higher rate than we would be able to without the Tasers, and I think that's a, a very deciding factor for me.
I, I absolutely guarantee that when we first went to the Taser, probably, I would say maybe eighteen years ago now, the Taser was a game changer in law enforcement and has absolutely saved lives of citizens and police officers, really throughout the nation. Axon Taser has a, a goal to reduce law enforcement-related shootings by fifty percent. I think in the next ten years, we'll, we'll see if we, if they get there, but we really couldn't do our jobs as successfully as we do without the Taser.
Excellent. Any other questions for Chief Hall?
No, just to comment, I think that anything that the council could do to promote the safety of our police officers is, or should be paramount, and as well as the public safety. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, accept public comment. And seeing no public comment, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of sixty-five Exion Taser tens and the Taser certification bundle for the total purchase price of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. That completes all of our action items. Now moving on to staff reports. Are there any staff reports? Everybody's quiet tonight. Mr. Murphy, any upgrades on our projects you'd like the community to know about?
Sure. On West Main, they've more or less finished up all concrete pores on the south side, west of Grand there. I've now moved on to the northern side, so hopefully by the end of this week, the lane closures coming into town will be done for a little while, until they move on to the eastern side of Grand or some paving work, so a little reprieve there on traffic, but I'll get it on the way back out of town. So your morning, you can sleep in five minutes later, but you'll be five minutes late at dinner. The, on East Main, you'll see some of the storm line work is going on, that's the trench cuts that are going across Main Street, those are the new storm lines, to get those properly sized ahead of, and modern, ahead of our overlay, which is planned for later in the summer. So all the lane closures, or all the lanes will stay open on Main Street, or one lane in each direction, so there'll be no closures of Main Street, but there will be lane shifts as that work continues. And they do plan to have everything cleaned up and patched up in time for the Fourth of July parade, so all that's tracking well, and then they'll come in behind that and finish up. Everything else is kind of status quo, so no major changes on any of the other closures. Roundabout's still trending for a late September opening, and a lot of the hard parts of the product are over, so now they're getting into a lot of the surface work and concrete will be starting soon, so. Yeah, everything else is just kind of business as usual.
A lot of good stuff going on.
Did it make any difference for the roundabout when the house and garage were finally moved off that lot?
The contractor appreciated a little more breathing room, so it wasn't necessarily hindering progress, it was just kind of making them have to be real surgical about staging and material storage and stockpiles and things, so just mixing a little leader on them, but overall, it, yeah, it didn't necessarily hinder progress or anything.
I happened to be there that day when they were pulling them out, and it made me realize that they couldn't have done it the month before because the intersection up to Townsend was closed.
Yep.
And so they were kind of stuck.
Yeah, we had to coordinate, and it worked out actually perfect with their schedule because they had to get the foundations prepped on their end, so about the time they were ready to finally move it, that part of the project was wrapping up, and we coordinated a time to, to make sure they'd have a clear path to get out, because it's no easy thing to move out of that site, so.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other staff reports? And going on to City Council comment?
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank Judy Ann there for allowing me to substitute for her on the tree board. It's very exciting, actually, for me. I didn't realize how surgical you have to be in some instances dealing with trees, trimming them and, and taking care of them, and we discussed, I heard new terms like urban canopies and, and the problems that we have in the city dealing with these trees, people just running their bikes into them or hitting them with sticks or whatever, actually does damage to these that allow bugs to get into them, that get into the trees, not to mention the fact that Montrose has a large or substantial amount of old trees that are in not premium condition that are actually getting worse. And the fact is that they're looking at new species of trees that, that grow, perhaps in our area, that they're trying to, to get so that we could transplant the, the trees, and I just wanted to say that having that new forester working for the city, he is very knowledgeable, and I saw this thing that looked like a clump of grapes that was caused by mites, that I thought, oh my God, they're going to kill the tree, and it was only a seasonal thing that dealt with the seeds that hang down from the trees. So it was pretty interesting and pretty exciting, and, and you can probably count on me giving some kind of comments on that in the future whenever I can attend. Thank you.
Very good. Any other council comments? I just want to say I had the privilege, are you leaning forward to...
Yes, I was. Thank you. Tomorrow morning forum, I'm going to do my little changing hat thing here. Forum tomorrow morning deals with MADA, and what they do in their MADA building and what their whole program is, as well as their expansion to the properties in downtown Montrose. So I think you might find tomorrow's program very interesting. If you don't want to come join us at eight o'clock tomorrow morning on the CMU campus, you can always watch it on the city's website. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the privilege of this weekend, I played in the Welcome Home Alliance for Veterans Golf Tournament, and they were very excited because it was probably the best-attended golf tournament they have ever put on, and they said that the amount of money they generated was very significant and made an actual great impact in this, in their organization. And it was a lot of fun, and I think we came in dead last. But I was saying, we ought to, we ought to get an award just because we're the most honest golf team that played. But they didn't go for that, so. But it was a great opportunity, and it's a great organization, and really glad that we can help support sort of organizations like that. If there are no other City Council comments, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.